Good evening, welcome to the January 12th, 2011 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda tonight is to approve the minutes of the December 1st, 2010 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections for those minutes? If not, are the clauses approved as submitted? We will conduct five public hearings this evening, the first of which is a zoning request to amend the reserve at Dill Lane PRD, 17.81 acres, and rename the said development to Richland Falls located along Dill Lane, Tim Reynolds's applicant. Ms. Ealy, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman Lamb, Planning Commission members, and happy new year. It's our first meeting of the new year. This first public hearing this evening is to consider amending a PRD Planned Residential District zone for property located west of Dill Lane just south of Mercury Boulevard. The properties to the west are zoned RS-10 in our developed cities for single-family subdivisions. Just to the south of the property are developed single-family subdivisions and a church. Just across Dill Lane, the property zoned PCD is the Tractor Supply Company, which is located on the corner of Dill Lane and Mercury Boulevard, or John Bragg Highway, John Bragg Highway is where this is. Between this property and the bank that's located on the southwestern corner of John Bragg Highway and Dill Lane are two single-family houses. This property was zoned PRD in 2009, however, no development has occurred. The original applicant who requested the PRD zone has not decided to move forward with a plan. However, Mr. Tim Reynolds approached staff because he had taken a look at the property and he's interested in developing it with some apartments. The current permitted use under the PRD is for multifamily residential uses, and so Mr. Reynolds would like to continue with that use, however, he'd like to make some adjustments to the plan. As the plan develop, you know that the plan that's submitted is what's approved, and so if they want to make any changes, any major changes to that plan, they have to go through the rezoning process. So staff met with the applicant and with his representative to discuss what he'd like to do and instructed him that he'd have to apply for rezoning. The current PUD is referred to as the Reserve at Dill Lane. It allows the construction of 14 three-story apartment buildings for a total of 260 dwelling units. It also utilizes onsite management personnel to gather the refuse into a trash compactor located at the entrance. The proposed amendment will increase the number of units from 260 to 276, so it's not a major increase in number of units, however, it would require your approval to go to 276 dwelling units, which increases the density from 14.6 dwelling units per acre to 15.5 dwelling units per acre. As proposed, there are 11 three-story buildings and five two-story buildings with first-floor garages. They've also renamed the project to Richland Falls. The representative of the applicant is Mr. Matt Taylor, and he's prepared a presentation for you. He'd like to go through what the specifics are of the plan, if you'll allow that. So after his presentation, if you have any questions, staff will be able, will be glad to answer them at that time. Otherwise, you should conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to board City Council. I also included in your packets just a preliminary plan showing where the building layout is. At this time, I'll invite Mr. Taylor to the lectern.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. Matt Taylor of SCC, and I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. John Harney of Park Trust. We're here tonight to introduce to you the Richland Falls project, which is a proposed amendment to the previously approved Reserve at Dill Lane project. I want to start by going over the already approved plan, just some of the highlights on it, and then we'll get into the details of our plan, try to keep it brief, and then open up for questions afterwards. The Reserve at Dill Lane was approved in the beginnings, early stages of 2009, however, that developer never moved forward with the property. We did at that time ask for rezoning to PRD. It was intended to capture the student housing market demographic at MTSU. We requested, and y'all allowed, 260 townhouse-style units. Those were made up of one and two bedrooms, mostly. We did have about 24-bedroom units there, and all of our buildings were three stories. We didn't have any garages on that plan. Here I'm showing the existing site plan as well as the building architecture. You'll see it was made up of a mixture of brick as well as cement board siding and all three stories. It kind of has that townhouse-style look to it. The new plan, we still want to leave the PRD, we just want to amend it. One of the large changes is our demographic. We want to change from the student housing to be a, to capture more of the empty nester, maybe the young families, somebody that's looking for a high quality of lifestyle with the amenities, the nice living quarters, the landscaping, all the things that go with that except the maintenance. They don't want to maintain the properties on the exterior, just on the interior. Our new plan does request for 276 units, which is 16 additional over the approved plan. We are requesting that these change to flat style, one story, everything's a one story instead of being broken up. We've gotten rid of all the four-bedroom units. We're still keeping a large percentage of ones and twos with only 18 three-bedroom units, and we're also introducing a two-story plan and garages to this plan. Here on the site plan, you'll see we've kept our entry point, main entry point coming in off Dill Lane, basically at the exact same point that it was in the previous plan. The layout in terms of the site has changed. We are keeping a gated entry as well as the general orientation and location of the clubhouse is staying at the same spot. We're also keeping a cul-de-sac at the rear coming off of Atlas for service vehicles. That will have an emergency crash gate so that our everyday traffic cannot go out that way. We're also still committed to some road improvements along Dill Lane as well as some pump station improvements downstream, just like with the old plan. The architecture that you can see has changed significantly, new materials, a lot different look to, to the building as you get away from that townhouse style and go to a flats. Really opens up the plan for more availability, got some porches, things like that. Some more details of the plan itself. We are going to have all underground utilities. The two-story buildings that I mentioned earlier are shown here in orange. We've tried to concentrate those in the southwest corner where we have some existing homes. Felt like those were more in line with those existing homes for scale and height, be more sensitive. We're still maintaining at least 30 feet setback there along that property line as well. Want to keep the larger three-story buildings in terms of the site. We're still going to have some strict GDO lighting standards here as well as gated entry, over 40 percent open space. We will be developing this in two phases. Primarily Phase Two will be the vertical construction of our buildings in that section. All the infrastructure will be put in with Phase One. Landscaping, we want to keep the same palette as with the previously approved plan. We still want to maintain some strong foundation planning plans to help establish that high-end living as well, and we're also going to maintain the existing plantings around, around the fence rows and property and just supplement that with some additional plantings where it's a little bit thin. Some of our palette is basically the same, provide some examples here. A much wider range is available in your pattern book. Got some maples, some magnolias, red buds, aubilias, and some rose bushes, all of which we see routinely on our, on our new planning plans here. Next, we'll move into the building design, the architecture itself. In this stage, we work pretty closely with staff, between the staff and the designers, come up with a collaboration, and we feel like the final product is a much more appealing and stronger, stronger aesthetically to the public than anybody else entering in what we previously had. Here I'm showing some, the three stories. We do have multiple footprints and designs for these three stories, but we want to just give the way it's intended to look overall, variation in stone height throughout on every, on every plan, work the face in and out, see a multiple building planes, and, and the different footprints will help break up any kind of monotony that you would, you would possibly see if you were just repeating the same footprint over and over again. And we really like the colors that we're using here, feel like they're pretty warm, earth tones. Here you'll see the two-story plan. They all have garages on the bottom with living quarters above, have a nice carriage-unit style garage door, try to make that even that much more appealing. For the amenities, we try to begin those as soon as they, as soon as you come into the development, starting with the gated entry, help to give you that feel of security and as well as an upscale feel. Want to continue that on our entrance, starting with the sign and following up with a nice landscape median and lighting plan. And right through the gates, we want to top off this entrance with a multi-tiered water feature to try to welcome people home each and every time. Throughout the development, we have spread amenities throughout. We have a sandpit volleyball up close to the clubhouse, and then about a third of the way back and another two-thirds of the way back through the project, we have some dedicated open spaces. Those are largely unstructured. We are going to include some grills, picnic tables, benches in those areas with some strategically placed landscaping to try to encourage the use of these areas. And finally, the kind of centerpiece of our amenity plan, want to be the clubhouse that creates a hub of activity, activity within the development. We started by having a very interesting architecture, some quality materials. And then you also have a very luxurious pool and cabana area around back that'll be gated in for the, for the use of the clientele here only and their guests. Inside, you'll have a multitude of activities ranging from pools to media rooms to exercise rooms. That wraps it up. If you've got any questions, myself or Mr. Harney would be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions from members of the Planning Commission? Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Before I open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the way we conduct our public hearings in case you have not attended one previously. Excuse me. Following the presentation by the applicant, we will open the public hearing, ask members of the public to come forward to give their comments either for or against the proposal. If you would, limit your comments to no more than three minutes, make all your comments and questions to the Planning Commission and not to members of the audience. If you do have questions, the staff will make note of your questions, and at the conclusion of the public hearing, we'll try to answer those for you. After the public hearing, we may call the applicant back up to answer some questions or to make further comments. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. If that's the case, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions from members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Lamb, one of the things that we always look at very scrutinizes is the parking, and I see this, this particular project has 60, 50, 35 more parking spaces than our minimum requirement, so that's a, that's a plus.
It looks like a very nice development. We've studied this in our work session previously as well. If there's no further comments or questions, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. The second public hearing is a zoning request, change to rezone Manson Pike Center approximately 1.3 acres from a planned commercial district to Commercial Fringe and approximately 2.5 acres from RS-15 to Commercial Fringe located at the corner of Manson Pike and Brinkley Road. Mr. Patel is applicant, I'm not even going to try the first names, apologies. Ms. Ealy.
Thank you again. The second public hearing this evening is to consider rezoning two parcels of property, both located south of Manson Pike. Property currently zoned RS-15 is located on the southeastern corner of Manson Pike and Brinkley Road. The parcel zone PCD is located on the southwestern corner of Manson Pike and Brinkley Road. I would like to point out that the map that's on the screen is slightly different than the one you have in your packet, and the reason, and I'll tell you what's different. The property that surrounds the parcel zone PCD, property owned by the Meadows, on my map is CL, and that's the proper zoning. After advertising this request, the representative of the property owner approached me and mentioned that they thought maybe we had the zoning wrong, and doing further research and finding out what it was zoned in the county, it was zoned commercial, so when it was annexed, it should have come in with our CL zone. So the map that I have on the screen is actually the correct map. You can see that this property surrounding the PCD property is zoned CL. And at the current time, there's a single-family house on it, although I believe that they're preparing to market the property for, to sell and develop it for commercial use. Just beyond the CL is our properties that are zoned RS-15, which is single-family residential district and permits single-family uses and some institutional uses by right. And just south of that is property zoned PRD, Planned Residential District, and the plan for that property is for some multifamily apartments. Property to the north is an unincorporated area of Rutherford County. Just across Brinkley Road, you can see there's, the area shaded purple is zoned RS-15. Now, this request was initiated by the owners of the property zoned PCD, the Patels. And planning staff and Planning Commission discussed including this purple parcel as an additional area to study because you can see the large parcel surrounding it is zoned CF, Commercial Fringe District, and really this RS-15 property is a byproduct of the road realignment. So the request is to rezone the PCD property shaded in orange, which is 1.3 acres from PCD, Planned Commercial District, to CF, Commercial Fringe District. The request is also made by planning staff to rezone this RS-15 portion, which is 2.5 acres from RS-15 to CF to be like that, the remainder of the property zoned CF. Just beyond the CF property is a developed single-family subdivision, and that's zoned RS-12. Currently, the PCD property has a list of uses that are permitted, and they're outlined in the book. And your staff comments have gone through each of those uses, and they are fallen to four categories: retail trade, finance, insurance, real estate, personal services, and business services. Now, the site is developed with a gas station with a convenience store in it, and then a two, two suites that are connected to the property, and the applicant is looking to lease out those suites. One of them was occupied by a pizza restaurant, but since, I guess since we looked at this last time, the pizza restaurants moved out, so they have two vacant units that they're looking to lease, and they think that they would be better suited to have a property zoned CF and have a better likelihood of having those properties filled. So they are returning to the matter and requesting CF zoning like the property across Brinkley Road. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning the property from PCD to CF and the property from RS-15 to CF. Do you have any questions at this time before you conduct the public hearing?
One question. Ms. Ealy, if this is all approved tonight, all of this will be CF?
That's right.
So you're, you're just, you'll have compatible zones across the street from each other? But not, not compatible zones, the same zones?
Right. The RS-15 parcel will actually, and that RS-15 parcel has a very, very low chance of ever being developed as a single-family house because the entire property that surrounds it is zoned for commercial uses, and actually you're going to look at a site plan that somebody's looking to develop that CF property. So the chances of it being zoned or being used for a single-family residential house are close to none, so that's, it would be, it would be compatible with that CF zone, and then the PCD zone is requesting to be like that across the street.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Ealy.
You're welcome.
I'll open the public hearing at this time, asking anybody to come forward that'd like
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission staff. I'm Brick Murfree of the firm of Murfree and Murfree, P L L C. My firm represents the applicant, and if you will, if you allow me, I'd like to approach. I've got a little bit of materials to circulate that I think would be instructive about the project.
I actually opened the public hearing a little too soon. I should have given Mr. Murfree a opportunity to come forth representing the developers, so we will move on with the public hearing as soon as you finish your presentation, Mr. Murfree.
Thank you Chairman Lamb.
I like your colors. I like his colors. Red and blue. I can't see.
The property in question for our application, this strip center in question is labeled PCD. It's got a little circle around it, and it's kind of hashed, and it's about square. It's on the corner of Manson Pike and Florence, and then the other property that staff has asked to add to the application is this yellow strip that's kind of rectangular shaped. If y'all see that across Florence Road. Then there's a large red track, which is also zoned, which is currently zoned Commercial Fringe. And if y'all return to the second page, there's a picture of the existing strip center, which is a very nice project architecturally. It's got brick, and it's well landscaped, and some of the concerns that y'all normally have with PCDs, and that's what is the property going to look like? Well, you know because it's built. As staff commented, there are two units that are empty in this strip center. The third unit is occupied by a convenience center, a gas station if you will, and my client would like the Commercial Fringe zoning amendment from PCD to Commercial Fringe to allow greater flexibility in searching for tenants to get the space leased out, and I think it would be in keeping with the character of the surrounding area and the large Commercial Fringe track that's just down the street. So I'm here to answer any questions that y'all may have, and the applicant is here as well, Mr. PJ Patel, who's the owner of the property, his company that is.
Any questions for Mr. Murfree? Thank you, sir.
We just asked you to vote in favor. Thank you Chairman Lamb.
Okay, now at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Please don't crowd the microphone. Don't make anybody hurt in there. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adalot, do you have a comment?
I just want to point out that although he did not speak, the owners of the property that is on the east side of Brinkley Road are present tonight. In case you had questions of them, they're, they're present, and I think they are supportive of the application, although they, they were, didn't make the application. I think that they had spoken with me some time ago that they expected to make the application at some point in the future, and that's why the Planning Commission went ahead upon my suggestion to go ahead and include them in this application at this point in time.
I think that was well warranted. Any questions from members of the Planning Commission? If none, Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval except for our staff comment.
Second motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. The next public hearing pertains to zoning change request to rezone approximately 18.4 acres from PUD to RM16 and 43.1 acres from PUD to Commercial Highway located west of Fortress Boulevard and south of Manson Pike, Charles Waite applicant. Ms. Ealy.
Thank you again. The third public hearing this evening is, consists of two parts, one of which is to rezone 18.4 acres from PUD to RM16, and that's identified as the blue color on the map that you have in your agenda packet so that the public can see on the television screen. And the second part is to rezone 43.1 acres from PUD to CH, Commercial Highway District. So the total acres for both properties is 61.5 acres, however, the request is divided into those two parts. The property is currently zoned PUD, Plan Unit District, and it's within our Gateway Design Overlay District. The PUD is referred to as Manson Pike Crossing, and I've also included in your agenda materials a, well, it should be in your agenda materials, but it's also on the screen, an illustration of the currently approved plan. The area which is colored black is where I took a black magic, or a black magic marker and showed the realignment of the road that the city's undertaking in. So as you can see, the road completely goes through the property, and it basically changes the nature of the development. As the plan is currently approved, they couldn't really construct it because our road has even gone through several other buildings. So rather than amend the planned development, since they don't have a plan at this time, they're requesting for a bulk zone, which is CH. So you have that to look at. The properties to the south are zoned PUD, and they're developed multifamily apartments, Gateway at Aldridge. Just to the west are, is an area that's in the unincorporated, unincorporated area of Rutherford County, however, in October of this year, it will be within Murfreesboro City limits. And then also to the west is an area zoned PRD, which has various types of residential The current PUD permits a Lifestyle Center with commercial multifamily components. The Lifestyle Center is a central component of the development and offers varieties of cafes, shops, grocery, drugstore, and family entertainment venues. This Lifestyle Center was rezoned and proposed before Murfreesboro got its avenues, so there've been a couple of changes since this plan initially got approved. We got a Lifestyle Center just on the other side of the interstate, and we have approved and began constructing, have almost complete, a road project which goes right through the property. The proposed zones, CH and RM16, is consistent with our general development plan for the Blackman community, which we adopted almost 10 years ago. Mr. Young, I know, is surprised at how accurate that plan is and how we've seen development occur in the future 10 years later. That coincides with the recommendations of that plan, but I did want to point that out to you. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing before making any recommendation on this rezoning request, remember it's two parts, but before making that recommendation, you should conduct a public hearing. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
I've got to defend myself, Ms. Ealy. I made some comments about how accurate the land use study was that we, that Ms. Jones helped 10 years ago, and it predicted this same type situation 10 years ago, so.
Ms. Jones was on the committee that put together the land use study, so she deserves a lot of accolades for this study being so accurate and well.
Congratulations.
Anyway. How much for that?
Go home.
Ms. Ealy, do you have anything else?
Do you have anything for me?
Any further questions from Ms. Ealy? Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Oh, excuse me, before I do that, does a developer or representative of the developer have any comments or presentation? Okay, thank you, Mr. Waite. In case I will open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Nobody? We're on the roll. Okay, seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions, Ms. Adalot?
Yes, sir, and briefly. I want to reiterate what Ms. Ealy touched on. When the city undertook to realign the roads in this area, it became a, just a absolute conclusion that we would be revisiting the zoning of this property. Mr. Waite and his partners, they were very willing to work with the city on an alignment that would work best for the city, and throughout this, I've wanted to express my personal appreciation for being able to work with them and hold them up. When we began to design that road, it takes time to, to design, it takes time to construct, and basically, we're looking at nine more months of construction before it's finished, so it's holding them up to be able to, to do their plans. Meanwhile, they are coming to get the zoning moving so they can know what to be able to do when the road is completed. So it's very timely that we're considering it now, and I want to express my appreciation for them working with the city because, as you can see, once we designed that road, it went right through the middle of their development plan, making it, well, making it not what it once had been.
Well, they had not only spent considerable funds, not just purchasing the property, but coming up with the master plan for the property was quite an investment in itself, I'm sure.
Well, yes, sir, it was, and these plans are costly to prepare, and they invested in a, a good plan, but they were willing to change it for the benefit of the traveling public. And of course, they reap the benefits of a better road plan. They realize that. Good roads and good traffic is good for development, and they, they understood that throughout this.
Sir.
May I reiterate that with this rezoning, the property will remain in our GDO, so I know that that is something that you'd like to know about, so the rezoning is not going to remove this from the GDO, so any future review will require to go through that.
Comment pertaining to the property staying within the Gateway Design Overlay District, so it's still. District, so it's still applicable for any future development on the property. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, if you look at this, the general area, this is an interstate commercial node, so I think that the Commercial Highway Zone is a good use of the land this close to so many traffic areas. And the city has spent time and money to improve these traffic areas, so that a master plan could be developed. So with that, I'll move for approval.
Second one. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. The fourth public hearing, zoning change request to rezone approximately 18.44 acres from RS 15 to Commercial Highway, 10.8 acres from Commercial Fringe to Commercial Highway, totaling 29.24 acres, located along Gresham Lane and Fortress Boulevard. Twin B Farm and Investment Partners are the applicants. Ms. Ely.
Thank you again. This request is to rezone property located along Gresham Lane, just east of Fortress Boulevard. This is a two-part request as well. There are 18.44 acres that are currently zoned RS 15 and are colored blue on the map that you have before you. And the request is to rezone those from RS 15 to CH. And there are also 10.8 acres that are currently zoned CF, Commercial Fringe District, that they're requesting to rezone from CF to CH. And that is shaded orange in the map before you. Properties to the north are zoned CH, Highway Commercial District. Properties to the south along Fortress Boulevard are zoned PRD, Planned Residential District, and are the Villas at Indian Creek. And the remaining parcels to the south are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County and are developed counties, single-family subdivisions. Interstate 24 runs along the eastern side of the properties and the ramp to the interstate is less than one roadway mile from the property. The applicant is requesting to rezone the 21.91 acres to CH. The current roadway realignment will cause New Gresham Lane to bisect a portion of the subject property. And you can see, this is the line that goes through the blue and orange area is the realignment of the road. And so you can see how it dips further south and bisects the property. And so because of that, they think it would be appropriate to request a rezoning. And the planning commission did include a property owned by the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, which is currently zoned RS 15 and has a conditional use permit for a church, a place of worship. We included that in the request because the CH zone would permit a church by right. And also, as far as site design goes, it wouldn't be appropriate for the design of the parcel on its northern adjacent property line to have to design and buffer as if this were single-family houses when in fact it's going to be developed with an institutional use with a church. Mr. Matt Taylor did contact the owners of the property, the church, and they were in favor of, at that time, he was inquiring upon getting it zoned to CF, which is Commercial Fringe District. And they did indicate that they were in favor of having their property rezoned and have granted permission to speak on their behalf. So if you have any questions about that, Mr. Taylor's prepared to answer them. Any site design for the properties will be required to go through our Gateway Design Overlay Review Process and Approval Process. So with this rezoning, if you do choose to rezone the properties to CH, then they will still remain within our Gateway Design Overlay District and will have to go through those processes, just like the previous property. The planning commission should conduct a public hearing. Mr. Taylor, do you have any words? Okay. If you will grant Mr. Taylor an opportunity, he'd like to come up and discuss the, and then after which you should conduct a public hearing, then forward a recommendation to City Council.
Thank you, Ms. Ely.
Good evening again. I just wanted to real briefly kind of give a brief history and express each applicant's desire to be rezoned. I have spoken with the church, they are okay with the zoning, they didn't really see any downside to it, nor did I. The, I think Mr. Smith's property, because of the road, it has really accelerated the change in the nature of his property. Fortress has been a busy road for a while, but the change in direction of the travel lanes has accelerated the change in his property, the nature of his property. And would like to see that rezoned to CH for a wider range of commercial uses allowed on his property, which would be appropriate up against the church as well as along Gresham Lane. The Investment Partners, which own the CF portion, a real brief history of theirs, that was rezoned to Commercial Fringe in 2002, which was before the GDO overlay came into existence. Also, at that time, the interchange had not been reconstructed, medical center had not been reconstructed, and obviously, our new realignment had not been going on. So the total area has really changed the way it feels, rid of the uses that could go in there. And the GDO really provides some extra protections that the CF was, would have provided at that time, I feel. With the road change started approximately three years ago, each of these applicants, with the exception of the church, kind of put all their plans on hold because they knew they really couldn't move forward until the road was done or nearing completion. Now that we are nearing the end of completion, they feel like that they anticipate an increased traffic, increased interest in potential buyers and users of these properties, and that's really the reason for the request. I'm accompanied by each of the applicants, as well as Mr. John Harney, if you have any questions for any of us.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you, sir. Ms. Adelot, before we open the public hearing, would you briefly go over what type of buffering is required between Commercial Highway District and residential property?
It's my recollection that that would be a type C buffer. Type C buffer is, let me check, maybe a type D. It's best when I read under the book rather than try to recollect.
I'm proud I found something that you can recall verbatim. Probably unusual.
He didn't say that he couldn't, he's just.
We have a chart in our zone order that details what these buffers are to be, how large they're to be, and what they are to be planted with. And Ms. Ely is telling me it is D, but I'm also going to look at the width, I think it's a 15-foot width. Is it 15 or 12?
15.
15, if she remembers right. And that's the exact way it is. But I'm going to add something else about that. The buffer also can be something that the planning commission looks at during site planning review. In the Commercial Highway and Commercial Fringe Districts and anything in the GDO, anything in the GDO district, as all this property is, requires site plan approval by the planning commission, whether it be less than an acre or more than an acre. The planning commission has the ability to evaluate a site and what's adjacent to it, and if there is a need for additional buffering or special buffering, the planning commission certainly has the authority to require that. We're sensitive that some of this property is adjacent to single-family residences, but I want to assure people in the public that there is the ability for the planning commission to help to protect them. Certainly, we want to hear testimony, if they can bring up something during the public hearing that they want the planning commission to know about, we would value that kind of testimony because it will help us to remember it and when we review a site plan.
Is there a difference between the buffering required from Commercial Fringe to Commercial Highway?
No, sir, it's actually identical.
Okay. Will the church property be required to have a more stringent buffer with a Commercial Highway zoning than it would have with a special use permit?
The church would be required to have a little bit more buffer. But as it turns out, their design pretty much has already accounted for that buffer. I think they pretty much had, well, they had much more than a 15-foot wide buffer, and it may be a matter of the density of the plantings. At this point, their site plan is pretty much lapsed. It's my recollection that they had sort of some recreation areas in the rear there, there wasn't a parking lot or building or any kind of dumpsters or sideways element. They had been very respectful of their adjacent residential property owners.
I would just want them to be aware that with this zoning, they would have possibly be held to a higher standard on buffering.
There may be some additional requirements on site plan and I believe their site plan is probably going to lapse before they get ready to build it unless they get going pretty soon, and they may be having to come back. But in any event, if they were able to move forward with their currently approved site plan, they're through the door. If they have that, site plan approval is good for 18 months. If they don't, it'll be a pretty easy matter to come back. But they've got plenty of room to get the kind of buffers needed. One of the things that happens, though, by going to the Commercial Highway zoning, they are a use permitted by right, so they would not have to go back to the BZI if they wanted to make some changes. It gives them a little bit more flexibility.
Mr. Taylor?
I did iterate to the church that their buffer width on the southern side would increase to a D, but with their special use, we had used a type B around the entire perimeter of the property, and so we were going to be able to get rid of the type B on the northern side if it was rezoned. So they were okay with the change there, so they were made aware.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions from members of the planning commission? If not, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. When you do come forward, please give your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Joan O'Shields. I live at 776 Spike Trail, Murphy's Road. My property is adjacent to this property that you're talking about changing from CF to CH. You know, we battled with this back when it was changed and, you know, agreed, the neighborhood agreed to the CF. Now, you know, not that many years later, you're wanting to change it to CH, so anything can be put there. It's like you are trying to squeeze out our neighborhood. You know, my children have grown up there, my grandchildren are growing up there. You know, it's always been a nice, quiet neighborhood. We don't have problems with break-ins and everything else, and you're piling this stuff up on top of us to where we are going to start having break-ins, you know, people wandering through our neighborhoods. And it's not safe for our children. You know, you're talking about a buffer. Well, when they did the interstate, they were supposed, when they took out all the tree lines, they were supposed to put a buffer in there. We haven't seen a buffer yet. Now we have, we're outside in our backyard and, you know, it's a lot louder now because of all the interstate traffic. You know, we've never seen a buffer there. So what's to say about a buffer between that property and our property? You know, our kids are going to be out swimming in the swimming pool and playing in the backyard with no telling what next to us. That's not right. It's not right. I mean, you know, children need a place to grow and not around cement all the time, and you're taking that away from us. You know, I understand, which I was told once before, the one acre that is adjacent to my property that backs up to the cul-de-sac is supposed to be still in the county and still residential. I hope that is so. I was told it was. But I just, I mean, the way that things are moving, you know, I feel that that acre is going to be snuck into all the rest of it because that's the total acreage, including that one acre. And so the acreage that you're talking about is incorrect then because the one acre is still residential. So I think that needs to be corrected.
I'll ask the staff to come in.
Okay. But, you know, our children need a place to breathe, and if you put these buildings on top of us, you know, what are you going to expect out of them?
Thank you, Ms. O'Shields. Anybody else?
Good evening Chairman Lamb and members of the planning commission. My name is Boris Sness and I live at 696 Spike Trail, Murphy's Road. I'm one of the applicants here talking tonight about this, and I appreciate y'all letting me come forward with y'all tonight to talk about this reconstruction of Gresham Lane. On behalf of the Smith family, we intend to stay there. We want, the CDO set us some standards very high, the planning commission, we agree with that, we want those standards to stay what they are. We appreciate what we're asking y'all to try to do. I did talk to two of my neighbors, Mr. Russ Knolls there at 63 Spike Trail. He has no problem with the planning and rezoning. He cannot be here to deny it because his wife is sick. And also, Mr. Alfred de Mumrum, which owns property on Gresham Lane, he just come home from the hospital today. He cannot be here, but he has no problem. And I appreciate what y'all are trying to do past this far. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sness. Anybody else?
Good evening Chairman Lamb and planning commission. I'm sorry I've got a bad voice, not a bad back too. So anyway, my name's Jewel Hale, and I, about four years ago, purchased about 11 acres out there with plans of villa and a hotel. We got to a point of getting a franchise for the Holiday Inn and planning on building a five-story hotel out there. And along about that time, I was approached by the city that they was wanting to do this massive road construction out there and asked me would I consider putting my plans on hold, which I went along with in hopes of making it better for everybody. And so my only reason to be here tonight is just to ask y'all to consider that and consider changing the zone to CH. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Hale. Anybody else?
My name is John Harney, and a few comments I'd like to make. I have worked with about all the property owners out there in this area that have brought these properties in asking for the rezoning. And I was involved with the rezoning process when Mr. Hale's property came up before to create the CF zone where it is. A lot of good things have happened out there. Number one, I was involved way back several years ago when the Campbell Estate wanted to rezone the property at Casey and Lane and Highway 96 a few years ago. And that got zoned, creating the Kroger Center and several of those out parcels. And at that time, the city didn't have a good fix to what turned into a major traffic issue of the left turns on the Casey and Lane and all the traffic jams that we still experience or see out there at Old Parkway in that area. When we started getting involved with this property out here on this new interchange at Manson Pike, I think the city was very proactive in looking at this area and through a traffic study, realized, when they did that traffic study, that in two or three years from now, that those left turn lanes needed, left turns morning and night, would almost double what we see at Casey and Lane in 96 today. And that certainly is what we know out there at Casey and Lane, that would be a very tough situation. At that time, everybody involved came to the table, all those property owners out there, the city, and worked out this new traffic alignment, which split a lot of these property owners' properties. And as you've seen tonight, really sort of filed up the vision they had for what they presently were doing. But I think everybody realized that the end result would be something better if everyone would put their plans on hold, let this new design come to fruition, and we're about to see the good result of that here in about another six or eight months. I think the one difference on the CF zoning that it stands on Investment Partners' property is back when it was zoned CF, there was no GDO guidelines that it was subject to. Since that time, they have agreed to allow the GDO guidelines and the restrictions that go with that to be put on this property. As I think Mr. Adelot has said, along with those GDO guidelines, gives the planning commission the right to individually look at each property, whatever building backs up to individual residential property, and assess what needs to be put there in order to create a satisfactory buffer next to a single-family residential property. I have represented several properties that have gone through the GDO process getting approved, and I think I can assure everyone, and of course, you're the ones that approve in those designs, but that's pretty stringent. At the end of the day, I think it's held to a standard that most of the areas of the city really don't have to meet. So I think that gives a pretty good comfort level of what goes out there is going to be highly scrutinized by the GDO standards, it's going to be nice. And I think an area that down the road will not turn into something that would be an eyesore for the city, but I think something that everybody would be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of the planning commission. My name is Clarissa Smith and I reside at 696 Spike Trail. I appreciate your time and consider- I appreciate your time and consideration of the zoning request to change this acreage from RS 15 to commercial highway. With the division, or Margaret Ann's word, of bisect of our property due to the recent donation of 6.43 acres to the city of Murfreesboro for the realignment of Manson Gresham Fortress, this land is no longer a working farm business of cows and hay production. I talked to our neighbor, Mrs. Gail Smith, at 645 Spike Trail. Gail couldn't be here tonight. She said that she has no problems with the rezoning of this property. She said, and, and she laughed, actually, she expected it. She said, what would you do with it otherwise? I'm sure you have driven by our property. We take great pride in the appearance of anything with our name on it, and I would like to ask your approval of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Would anybody else like to speak?
Good evening, uh, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Denise Jones, and I grew up at 530 North Lawn Court, which is in this, um, county neighborhood, and I've seen it be swallowed up by development out there, and I know that my mother and stepfather, who still live there, um, really don't wanna see more development right on top of them. And I have recently spent some time out there, and the realignment of Gresham Lane, I think, has really sort of benefited from maintaining that more of a residential area. It sort of has kept it a little more isolated from the highway. And if you look at the, where the road goes through, um, where Gresham Lane used to come out was a real pain to get any traffic in and out there, and so if you're developing that part, it's gonna be hard to develop on the highway side. Um, if you bring the commercial highway back over to the residential side, that seems to really be infringing upon that residence. And I know that there's a lot of development just on 96, which is really close to all of these other residential areas, so amenities are already nearby, um, and then the other development on the other side of the freeway. Um, so I would, I would like to see it maintained, commercial fringe, to protect the residential area more, and, um, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Stones. Anybody else? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Adalot, why don't you start by, um, answering Ms. O'Shields's question about that other lot, if you can, sir?
Uh, yes, sir, and that was first on my list. The lot at the end of the cul-de-sac, and that would be the one on the, I guess it'd be the north and east side of the cul-de-sac, uh, is also owned by Mr. Hale and Mr. Kirby. It is not in the city. It is not part of this rezoning, and, uh, it, uh, is zoned RS 15 under the county's zoning regulations. Uh, at this point, that property, uh, cannot be annexed, or actually, we've already voted to annex the property along with the entire subdivision, but that's part of the area that's in litigation, and it will be some time until that is sorted out. Uh, so just to, um, to reiterate, it is not part of the zoning application, it is not in the city, and that is not even being discussed at this point in time.
Okay. Ms. Young, did you have a question?
I was gonna ask, Mr. Adalot, let me, if Ms. Ely, who is your expert, is correct, uh, the commercial highway, uh, setback, buffering, uh, and the commercial fringe are the same?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Then you throw on the GDO aspect of this, which is a higher standard than our normal buffering between residential and commercial?
Yes, sir.
And this, and this body has site plan approval to add to and enhance buffering between residential and commercial?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones? I'm Ms. Jones.
Um, the CF property, the orange property, or whatever color that is, that is to the south, um, you know, I'm not good at visualizing or picturing, that it's 29 something acres to begin with, then the road cuts through the middle of it, so how much acreage is there to the south of the new road, um, that is currently zoned CF? About?
The acreage doesn't include the right-of-way?
Oh, it does not?
No. Mr. Taylor provided me with those acreages. He, um, made sure to look into them.
Does it say that on there? How much?
Well, the, the acreage south of the realigned Gresham Lane, uh, that's zoned course of fringe, I'm gonna guesstimate. I don't think enough.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think there's probably about six acres there.
And so can you, like, compare? What, what would you do with a six-acre site? What type of, if you could tell me something else in the city that, you know, just compare?
The, uh, Chamber of Commerce is approximately between four and five acres.
Okay. All right.
I was wrong. It does include the right-of-way acreage, does it?
It does. Mm-hmm, it does.
Uh, Ms. Jones, members of the Planning Commission, I want to address this business of the, um, commercial highway versus commercial fringe. The, uh, development standards in terms of placement of buildings, the setbacks, the landscaping requirements, the access requirements, the drainage requirements, landscaping screening, are identical, whether it's commercial highway or commercial fringe. Absolutely identical. There's not any difference. The, the difference is some of the uses that are permitted. And what, what you've got there are some things that are allowed in the, uh, commercial highway that are not allowed in the commercial fringe zone. When we were looking at this area in the eyes of, um, that we had, uh, I guess at, uh, in the late 90s, when we undertook to annex this area, the new interchange had not been built, but it was, it was being discussed. It had not been built, but was being discussed. The gateway design overlay district had not been even thought about. We, we did not have anything, tool like that in our, in our, um, array of tools. This area was, actually, at that time, occupied by a single-family house, a historic structure, uh, and the property was wooded, it had a lot of trees on it, and it was hard to see something different on there. And now I'm talking about specifically the commercial fringe property. The avenues didn't exist, the Metro Center Parkway did not exist, and we were being asked to consider commercial zones for that area. Without the interchange, without the, uh, other tools, it was hard to imagine some of the, uh, commercial highway things in that area. The, um, that parcel, actually, this is kind of, um, odd, it was not in the mapped area of the Blatman Landing Study, 'cause it was already viewed as, as being in the city. The, all those things have changed. Now, one of the, and I'm gonna tell you, that our, our gateway design overlay tool has given you a higher degree of scrutiny. It also has caused applicants to be much more, um, conscious of what they're doing. And, and how significant that is, I, it's hard for me to really convey to you how significant that is, because now an applicant gets to meet with us, uh, many more times, and we discuss all these design objectives, where they are, how they fit in, what they're doing. We have conversations with the applicants we used to not ever have, the most, the most, um, I guess our, um, biggest, uh, tool in, in changing and to get better quality development has our, has been our engagement of applicants, uh, into the process more directly. It used to be we'd let the engineers turn their plans in, we'd review the plan, send them comments, if they met the minimum requirements, they got the permits. Now, every applicant, we, we sit down with them, every site plan, we talk with the applicants. We talk with them about their buildings. We talk with them about the neighborhood design, and we talk with them about their drainage. We talk with them about their, their building color materials. Uh, no wonder Mr. Harney thinks he's getting worked over when he comes to do business in the Gateway District. Uh, this is just because he's not accustomed to it, but it's the new paradigm. That is the way development is done in our community now, and it causes everybody to be more conscious. So what, what we're looking at now is just a degree of, of, of uses. Uh, one of the uses that might be permitted would be a hotel. A hotel's not inherently bad, particularly when it's well-designed, and they're, we're conscious of the design elements that are gonna be, uh, that contribute to its impact upon the surrounding property. Uh, same way with a, um, a restaurant. They're not inherently bad, uh, but if they're poorly designed and they're poorly integrated with an adjacent property, they can be impactful. Our process is designed to mitigate those impacts through engagement of the applicant and his team. If we leave it to an applicant to design his site without looking around him, he's gonna do a bad job, and it doesn't matter where he's at. When we engage them into the process, discuss with them what they're doing, how they're doing it, how they're gonna go about it, make them think a little bit more in the context of where they are and what they're doing, better results are being had. And we're seeing it community-wide, not just in the Gateway, but community-wide. But the GDO brings it to you two times, when in the past it used to only be once for a cursory review. The, uh, and I, and look at what I want to say about this, um, well, I'm, um, on my sub-box. This area is, in fact, a part of a commercial node, an interstate commercial node, the commercial, the commercial fringe and the RS 15. I think that, uh, if we, if we fail to zone the area that's commercial fringe to commercial highway, we'll be, we'll be stumbling back to some of those interstate uses that just are not permitted in the commercial fringe. Commercial fringe seems to work better in areas like the, uh, New West Cassis Highway and Rutherford Boulevard. That's where, that's where it was created for, and that's where, where it has worked best. Some of the area on South Church Street, out in the area around Savannah Ridge Drive, the commercial fringe out there seems to work real well. The uses seem to be a good fit for the, for that neighborhood. This being an interstate commercial node, it just seems like it's, it's, it's my prediction, we'll be, it'll be bad before you, because some of the uses that wanna come in that aren't permitted in the commercial fringe will be here. But again, it is an identical development standard. The way they construct their physical environment and the review process is identical, commercial highway or commercial fringe.
But just, for example, the, the GDO means that if, whether it's commercial fringe or commercial highway, if it was just a straight commercial fringe or commercial highway, then the buffers are set at whatever our guidelines are. But since the GDO district is on there, then if, for example, a plan comes in, whether it's CF or CH, and we decide we wanted to require more or thicker or something buffer behind Ms. O'Shields, we could require that?
Actually, Ms. Jones, you can do that anywhere in our community where you're reviewing site plans.
Even the straight zone?
The Planning Commission is site plan review authority, that when you see the need for additional buffering to mitigate the impact of a proposed use upon an adjacent property, you have the authority to require additional buffering, whether or not it's in the Gateway Overlay District or not. The Gateway Overlay District regulations give you two opportunities to review this.
I just get to look at it twice?
That's right. Initial design review and final design review.
Any other questions for Mr. Adalot? There's no further questions for the desires of this commission.
Mr. Chairman, uh, since the designs are, are the same with one zone to the other, commercial fringe to commercial highway, and if you look at the large picture of this, this is, as Mr. Adalot reiterated, a commercial interstate node. Um, this has put the property owner at a disadvantage to the fact that it's split his property down the middle, uh, through, uh, cooperating with the city. Uh, it's delayed a timetable for up to three years for possible development of this, and the opportunity for the Planning Commission to review everything that's done on any of these properties regardless of the zone twice. I feel there's plenty of safeguards to make sure that, that the area is buffered and that the, uh, the land is developed, uh, in good order. So with that, I'll move for approval.
And I second the motion.
Motion, it's made, and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries. Uh, let me say, this is a recommendation for approval to the City Council. Mr. O'Shields, you would have an opportunity to come back to express your concerns to the City Council at a later date, at another public hearing, if you choose to do so. Move on to the final public hearing of the evening. Street closure and right-of-way abandonment request for a portion of Wiles Court at Greenland Drive. Middle Tennessee State University is having this evening.
Thank you again. This last public hearing, um, is being held to consider possibly closing a portion of right-of-way called Wiles Court. Wiles Court is located south of Greenland Drive, just across Scotland Drive. Wiles Court was dedicated to the city of Murfreesboro in 1964 with a subdivision plat that was recorded, named Wiles Court Subdivision. The, uh, the entire right-of-way is 40 feet wide and terminates into a cul-de-sac with a 40-foot radius. Middle Tennessee State University has acquired five of the six properties located along Wiles Court and is requesting this right-of-way abandonment. So MTSU owns the vacant parcel located at the southwestern corner, and then all of the, all four parcels that are located around the bulb of the cul-de-sac. The parcel located on the southeastern corner is still privately owned, and because that property is still privately owned, this, um, right-of-way abandonment request is only for a portion of the right-of-way. The, um, MTSU did not request the portion of right-of-way adjacent with the property owned by the private property owner, so that they will maintain use of that right-of-way. Um, and the, the address of that property is 1902 Greenland Drive. MTSU has requested that the city abandon this portion of right-of-way and deed the property over to the university. The university plans to extend the road where it currently terminates into a cul-de-sac, extend it through the properties to the south, and will eventually connect into the roundabout that's currently located on campus, so this will become a through street. Um, MTSU plans to remove the four houses located along the bulb of the, of the cul-de-sac, and they'll remove those houses, um, if you do decide to close, or this right, abandon this right-of-way. Um, MTSU has also, also asked to change the name of this right-of-way, but that is not a subject of this public hearing. That'll be a subject of the item later when Mr. Adalot will go over. Um, correspondence that I had with various utility companies and, um, department heads indicate that Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department does need to maintain an easement, um, through the right-of-way, because they have some infrastructure there, and I did include my memo, and then the replies I got back from those who did reply to me with their, um, requests. And of course, MTSU would be able to relocate these utilities if, if that were something that they wanted to do. They just have to work with the Water and Sewer Department, otherwise we would want an, um, an easement for that. The Engineering Department also wanted to make sure that MTSU dedicates the proper right-of-way and easements necessary to support their proposed roadway improvements at Greenland Drive, Wiles Court, and Scotland Drive. Engineering, Engineering Department also had a second, uh, comment, and that was that Wiles Court needs a new street name, and of course, we're gonna discuss that at a later time. I included a photo of Wiles Court that's on the screen, and so, um, if you can look in your packets, or people at home can look at the TV and see what it looks like, those cars are, are all for the one house that's located there on Wiles Court. If indeed the Planning Commission does decide to approve this request, then staff recommends that you do place some conditions of approval in the request, and they are that you, um, that you require the applicant to provide a legal description for the area, a re-subdivision plat, and field locate the utilities to properly locate the easements. These, um, conditions we include with all right-of-way abandonment requests that we study, so this is, would be our normal procedure to, if you included those conditions, if you decided to approve it. The Planning Commission would need to conduct a public hearing to consider closing Wiles Court and abandoning this portion of right-of-way, and then discuss the matter. Um, Agenda Item 7B will be to consider transferring the property over to MTSU as a mandatory referral, so you're gonna see this come up again, but as a mandatory referral tonight. But this is to consider closing and abandoning this portion of Wiles Court. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
I have one question.
Ms. Smith?
So did you say the one parcel on the southeast corner is still owned by an outside individual? Oh, okay.
Yes, southeastern corner.
Of the intersection?
Of the intersection.
I'm, I'm with you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Evans.
You're welcome.
Hey, all, the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission, I am Mike Hughes, and I live at 2003 Windsor Street in the Scotland Acres subdivision, uh, directly adjacent to this new intersection. Uh, first off, I'd like to say I am an MTSU alumnus, uh, the class of 89. I met my wife at MTSU, and my father-in-law was an English professor at MTSU for 33 years. I attend several MTSU football, basketball, and baseball games, and I consider myself a, uh, part of the MTSU family. However, I have serious concerns about- However, I have serious concerns about the new MTSU entrance onto Greenland Drive at Wiles Court, and since this is a public hearing, I felt I should voice my concerns, uh, for the record. And I know that the DI has been cast, and MTSU's parking, uh, transportation improvement plans is, is underway, um, and I understand MTSU is gonna try to do what is best for MTSU. I have reviewed their plan, and I agree that it will help dissipate their student commuter traffic problem. However, the new entrance will greatly impact the surrounding areas, specifically Scotland Acres. Uh, currently, MTSU's road, Champion Way, is the only primary vehicular circulation entrance into the northern part of the campus onto Greenland Drive. Uh, Champion Way connects to a five-lane section of Greenland Drive, uh, two westbound, two eastbound, and a center turn lane. The new entrance onto Wiles Court will connect to a three-lane section of Greenland Drive, with only one way, uh, east, one way left, and one center turn lane. The problems I see, um, first, is the recently reconstructed three-lane section of Greenland Drive is undersized to handle the volume of MTSU traffic that will place, be placed on it at Wiles Court. The majority of MTSU traffic exiting the new Wiles Court entrance will be heading west, the majority of it will be heading west on Greenland. Uh, currently, cir, there's a solid line of cars coming out of Champion Way, uh, all the way to Middle Tennessee Boulevard, which blocks the far right or westbound lane on Greenland, uh, where they come out. This traffic, as is mainly commuter, heads, uh, towards Clark Boulevard, Memorial, Old Fort, and into I-24. And let's say if you split the traffic coming out of Champion Way, put half or whatever amount on Wiles Court, you're introducing a new traffic load that wasn't on Greenland before, um, before this proposed intersection. Uh, furthermore, MTSU's master plan dated July 24th, 2009, calls for a six-story parking garage with 1,800 parking spaces to be constructed just south of this new Wiles Court entrance. This volume of traffic, as well as the student apartments located nearby and other parking lots, will overwhelm this three-lane section of Greenland Drive. Second, between the two entrances, the, the current one and the proposed one, um, is the Reeves Rogers Discovery School. The school was constructed in 1958 and was not designed for a vehicle-dominated society that we live in today. Uh, traffic for the Discovery School currently backs up onto Greenland Drive in both directions as parents wait to drop off or pick up their children. Currently, this traffic often blocks Wiles Court and Scotland Drive, and, um, Brown Drive in the other direction. MTSU commuters wanting to exit and go west out of the Wiles Court entrance will, uh, create an even greater traffic nightmare. And the third problem is when this section is blocked, the traffic will backed up on, um, with the, traffic backed up on Greenland, MTSU commuters will be unable to travel towards the interstate to Clark and Memorial, um, and they'll use Scotland Acres as a cut-through to move around this traffic jam, uh, and then back around to Clark Boulevard. Um, although Scotland Acres is an old subdivision, there are many families with young children to be included. As I mentioned, um, MTSU's gonna do what they feel that they need to do, and I, I, I see their point. But as a resident of Scotland Acres and a citizen of Murfreesboro, I just want you to be aware that I see that these are problems that we need to address proactively instead of just on the, on the slide, but thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes, good points. Anybody else?
Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Bill Patterson, 1215 Raleigh Court, and I am the president of the Scotland Acres Neighborhood Association. And I'm very glad this issue has finally reached a public hearing. Uh, the Scotland Acres neighborhood, and also the Park Manor neighbors, are very concerned about this, because it's going to cause great disruptions. Now, Mike has made very good, uh, comments about the traffic, and I want to, uh, second what he said about the, the inability of Greenland Drive to handle the traffic which would be created. The university has, um, come up with this plan to put a thoroughfare right through Wiles Court to Scotland Acres, or to Scotland Drive, and create a very hazardous traffic issue for Scotland Acres, because it will create a thoroughfare. People will be able to go straight through Scotland Drive, turn onto Hanover, and go over to the apartments and other residences over there on Brown Drive and Hanover, and it will be, um, it will be a nuisance for our neighborhood. Uh, Mr. Adelot can attest to the issues we've had with, uh, the Hanover Drive, and we, we really don't want to see this. The, the college is really not, they inform, they don't consult, and they say this is what we're going to do, and that's it, and, um, they're creating an issue for us, which is really not fair to Scotland Acres or the people who live on Greenland Drive and Park Manor. And I think that before you, um, give them this, uh, right-of-way, that our issues need to be analyzed and brought forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Anybody else? I guess I'll close the public hearing. Ms. Stradalot, do you have any comments?
Uh, yes, sir, and maybe I need to, um, clarify part of what's going on here. With or without the city's permission, MTSU can extend a street from the end of Wiles Court. They own all the lots at the end of it, and if they wanted to extend the street, they can, into their campus, and there's not much the city can do to stop them. What they're asking is that the right-of-way that they're going to use, that since they own all the lots that are on it, uh, in the area that's colored orange, they want that back so that they can make that part of a private street, which would be an extension of a street they're doing on, in terms of their campus. Uh, and, uh, basically, they are coming to us and asking us to abandon the right-of-way so it can become their private street that they're gonna rebuild to a standard consistent with their campus. It will be something that they want to be able to police themselves, so that the city police aren't responsible for writing tickets, that they'll have, since it's part of their campus, it'll be theirs. Because they don't own the lot on the southeast corner of the intersection, they are not asking for us to abandon that part of, um, Wiles Court at this time. At someday, at some point in time when they do own it, they will probably visit with us to talk about, abandon that portion of the street as well. Before they move forward with this program to, uh, make this street connection, they did do a traffic study, and this tra, not surprisingly, the traffic study does identify impacts to the traffic, uh, that they can predict. It's hard to, to deny that that would be the case. And we, um, uh, our traffic staff did review those, so that we would have knowledge of what they would be. And part of it was to have a justification for a traffic signal at that intersection. MTSU will be constructing a new entrance monument, they'll be constructing a plaza on the southwest corner, uh, sort of like what they've got on, um, Rutherford Boulevard at their, um, uh, campus access near the front row. They're looking to build the pretty crosswalks with the different colored pavers at the, uh, crossing the street. Uh, so they're, they're gonna be doing some improvements. We, as a staff, and, and this is, I spoke with Mr. Richardson about this several times over the last couple of weeks, we don't know what all the impacts will be, but what we wanna do is before we start talking about closing Hanover or making big changes in the traffic, that we let the improvements get built, that we give the chance to operate, see how it actually works, see what the impact is, then go about making those kind of studies and changes if they're warranted. Um, and that's about the best way for us to approach that. Uh, we're not gonna say, well, this is the end of the story, that there, we're, that MTSU's gonna build this connection and we're gonna forget about it. No, that's not the case. MTSU's gonna build a connection, and we're gonna monitor the situation, and as, uh, conditions indicate a need to make changes, we'll, we will be able to, to do them on a informed and as-needed basis. And the city's traffic staff is gonna monitor what's going on around here, as they do the whole area. Uh, this is an exciting time. MTSU has grown a lot. I think that this access will be a very attractive access. I'm, I'm, I really do like what they've done over on Northfield, I mean, excuse me, Rutherford Boulevard, uh, over around the front row with Alumni Drive and the other connection. It looks good, I think it improves the image of the campus, and this will be ju, very, very similar to that. So what you're being asked to do is abandon, as a public right-of-way, the area that's colored orange. Right, and that we're, uh, close and abandon the right-of-way. They're gonna make it into a private street. Yes, sir, Mr. Clark?
Did I hear you say that signalization would be there?
Yes, sir.
I thought it was...
And it's on the MTSU's tab, they're building it, they're paying for it.
Mr. Patterson, like Mr. Hughes, brought up some good points, but I do think he, the portrayal of MTSU as being, uh, a big conglomerate out there that does not listen or care about what we have to say as the city government, I don't think is necessarily fair, Mr. Patterson. Uh, I know Mr., Dr. McPhee and the staff at Middle Tennessee and the Planning Department as, as well as the administration are very concerned about their cooperation with the city on the things that the city is trying to accomplish and try, coordinate everything that they want to do with us, and they have been excellent as far as working with the city on items such as the Middle Tennessee Boulevard, uh, reconstruction, which will start, I presume, shortly here. But, uh, I know they do, they are part of the community, and they do want to be a responsible community member, just like any, uh, other large corporation would be here in the city. Ms. Stradalot, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, sir. Is everybody clear on what you're being asked to do?
Yes, just abandon the right-of-way, that's, that's all we're talking about right now.
Well, but one other question regarding Greenland Drive. At this point, is it, it goes from five lanes to three?
Uh...
From there to Rutherford, is that correct?
From just the other side of, of the Discovery School, the old Reeves Rogers, from just the west side of it, back to, um, Rutherford, just three lanes. Yes.
Just three lanes. Anything in the, uh, traffic studies or plans for expansion to, uh, to go, to coincide with the, uh, the west side of it, where we have five lanes?
Not at this point in time. We've seen a long-term need to see that, maybe to, um, maybe five or seven lanes, depending upon the actual cross-section. But one of the problems being the existing houses, uh, pretty to the west of, excuse me, to the east of Wiles Court, really complicate that quite a bit. We, we wanna be real sensitive to people's front yards, we don't wanna be building something. Uh, there, there is a lot of traffic in that area, particularly at peak hour times, we, we're aware of that. That's the sort of thing that we'll just have to monitor to see if, if it's warranted to undertake that type of construction, and that's what I've talked about with the, uh, let's get it built, and then let's see what we need to do. Hopefully, we can not, we can, we can avoid seeing people lose their yards, and if, if it works well, we, we may not have to build it to five lanes. We wanna monitor it first. I, I will add this, I would defer to our traffic staff to, on, on that subject, and in the future, you want them to appear at a work session. I think Mr. Richardson or Mr. Bond Chandler would be glad to speak at a work session about the, uh, traffic, uh, improvements that are projected and needed in the, uh, MTSU area. There's some exciting things going on, particularly with the reconstruction of, um, the Middle Tennessee Boulevard.
Any other questions? No, we're ready for a motion.
Yeah, Chairman Lamb, I believe, actually, I think this motion should be, uh, if you are, about whether or not to close the street.
Yes, sir.
And not to abandon the right-of-way at this time. The actual abandonment of the right-of-way, if it's, would be Item 7B under our agenda, the mandatory referral concerning abandonment of the right-of-way.
The agenda says street closure and right-of-way abandonment.
It does, but right-of-way abandonment's also the topic of 7B.
Yeah.
And the, the first act, and the act that requires a public hearing, is the closure of the street.
Okay.
Uh, there, there's not a public hearing required on the abandonment. I'm not sure that it makes a whole lot of difference whether we abandon it at this point rather than at Item 7B, but there is the, the distinction that the public hearing is, is actually for the closure of this as a public street.
That's why we have a lawyer here to keep us on the straight and narrow.
We have a planner to remind you that I'd like for you to place three conditions of approval on it, if you do approve it.
Would you like to reiterate this?
Yes. To require them, um, the applicant to provide a legal description for the area, a re-subdivision plat, and field locate the utilities to properly locate the easement.
Okay. Mike, it's over.
Mr. Chairman, my question for approval of the street closure and the, uh, three requirements that we see we just said.
Second motion.
Motion's made, and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. We'll move on into the Gateway Design Overlay Section. We have one item under that this evening, and that is the MapCo Express, a final design review and site plan for the 4,735 square feet on 1.3 acre zone, commercial highway, GDO-1, GDO-2, and Battlefield Protection Overlay located at the corner of Medical Center Parkway and Gresham Park Drive. MapCo Express Incorporated is the developer. Ms. Logan, good to see you.
Thank you, you too. Good evening, Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. The, um, Gateway Design Overlay item before you tonight, and as we've heard a lot about the Gateway Design Overlay District tonight, is for the final design review for the MapCo to be located at the corner of Medical Center Parkway and Gresham Park Drive. This will be located on the northwest corner of that intersection, two lots down from our new Chamber of Commerce building, which, um, had, they have actually moved into and, um, is, um, completed at this point, on the, I mean, with the exception of a few punchless items, the interior, but, um, so, as we're moving forward, um, it was really important to staff that as we analyze this, this design issue on this item, that it be something that we felt was indicative of what you all are trying to do in that area, as well as meet and match in the best as can with the Chamber of Commerce building. If we could go to the screen, and I wanna explain to you a little bit of the architecture, and these renderings are a little bit difficult to tell, um, but, um, it will be a two-tone brick building with a defined base, with a defined middle, and a defined roofline. As you'll notice, Ms. Ely has the, um, color board for you tonight, and they're in colors similar, and materials similar to what you will find on our Chamber of Commerce building. One of the things I wanna note for you, since the initial design review, is that, um, the darker brick color, which is the brownish color, will be at the base, they will be adding the reddish brick colors to the middle, and we, um, at the original initial design review, if you'll recall, there was not, um, any type of mansard or hip roof on the, on the structure, it was a flat roof, and there was a lot of concern about making sure that we had adequate screening of the rooftop equipment, and that we also wanted to make sure that from all four sides, because of this proximity to Wilkinson Pike, that this building was an appropriate look. And that is what you have before you tonight, um, in terms of the roofline changes. The one thing that, um, I wanna show you is the canopy. Um, the canopy will be two-tone colors as well to match with the existing, um, properties in the area, um, in terms of the, um, bricks. The actual canopy itself, they have asked for a three-inch stripe in the green color to go around the canopy. Now, this is a change from the initial design review. This was, no striping was shown at all in the initial design review. This will be three-inch stripe located at the bottom of the canopy, one inch being the outrageous green color, and the top two inches being the forest green color, um, and then as well as the MapCo symbol. Uh, from what I've been told, I mean, this is up to you all to allow for this design. Um, they, MapCo wants it as part of their branding. Of course, if they'd had, uh, the original, um, branding, it would be green all the way around, and, I mean, we didn't even discuss that. So, um, that's what they've come back with today, and if you, um, are okay with it, they've asked for it. Of course, I don't think that MapCo has said it's a necessity, but it is part of their branding that they would like to keep. We don't feel that it's distasteful as it's shown. Um, it's not illuminated, it will not be illuminated. Um, it's not illuminated, it will not be illuminated. So it'll just be the ACM material, it's, it's an applied material to that EPIS canopy. And also, they have, um, it's really been important to us in how they tie that stone front feature into the rest of the building. And originally, they were going to do a connection to tie into the roof under what they call cricket, it's just, it's just a connection to tie something in that doesn't really fit, and there was going to be an open area there, and we were really concerned about that because we felt like it didn't really fit with the rest of the building. And so what they've done is actually extend that, the cap of the, of this, and the stone to tie directly into the, to the roof. Now, the one thing that this picture shows that, um, is, is not truly indicative of the building itself, is it shows the windows going all the way across. There are going to be six windows on the building, but there's more building beyond what this picture showed. This picture was to try to show how that stone feature was tying into the roofline, but it doesn't really show that there's, there's a, a longer section of building there that without windows. Um, staff would like to work with the architect and see if we could continue windows all the way across. I don't know that that's possible because of what their storage options are inside, but if the Planning Commission would allow, we would like to continue work with them prior to permit on that. The site plan itself is in good order, and we do, um, want to make sure that the city engineer has final review and approval of any construction in the public roadway, and that does include the concrete island. If you'll recall from the initial design review, a concrete island will be added along Medical Center Parkway to not allow for wrong turn movements coming out of there, going in the opposite direction on Medical Center Parkway. That was a big concern of the Planning Commission and, uh, Chairman Lamb. Um, originally, they had shown a striped island, and the requests of the Planning Commission have come back with a concrete raised island. Staff has looked at the detail, and we feel like it's fairly workable. Um, we do have a little concern about, um, trucks hitting it, and we've looked at the truck template and what, what's going to be causing there. We don't necessarily believe that the fuel trucks will hit it on a regular basis, but we do feel that some of the larger trucks that deliver other products, such as sodas and beer and those things, might hit it. So what we would like to do is work with the applicant to look at maybe lowering the con, he's got it as a six-inch mountable curb, um, mountable concrete island right now, actually lowering that, lowering that to a four-inch mountable curb, where you kind of hit up on the slope with the tire instead of going up and over. It's just, it's just a design feature that, if you'll allow us to do so. Um, the landscaping plan has been revised to address all of the streetscape patterns and the streetscape plans as required for this area. They are showing their street plantings, they're showing the plaza to be constructed with this site plan, as well as all of the additional landscaping materials that are required for it. This landscaping plan appears to be in good order. They worked closely with the urban environmental department prior to this meeting. However, the urban environmental department has not seen the final plan, but we are hoping that, um, that we believe that it's in good order, but of course, we would ask that you would allow them to have final approval of the landscaping plan prior to the issuance of any permits. Otherwise, I think that, um, that should address the majority of the issues, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have about anything related to this site.
Ms. Logan, the, um, getting back to the entrance right there where, where the island is.
Yes, sir.
Uh, twenty-five-foot radius indicated on here, and we've talked about this many times before, too. Is that sufficient to, if you have stacking on the outgoing lane over there, is that sufficient for a tractor-trailer, like fuel truck, to be able to negotiate that right turn in there and not have the rear wheels, uh, coming up over the curb there?
We believe that it is, and the truck template that was provided by the applicant shows that it would not.
We've had so many, so many issues around the city where it's not sufficient, so.
What we'll do is, um, we do believe that, um, the right wheel, according to the truck template that we've seen, which is for a larger truck, which is for a large eighteen-millimeter truck, which is larger than your average fuel truck, it's got a, they're showing a truck with a forty-two-foot trailer. We believe that based on what's been presented, that it will not hit, but we will, we would like to make sure that we have the opportunity to review that again by the city engineer prior to issuing any permits. Of course, Mr. Griffith is our city engineer, and he has final say-so of anything constructed in the public right-of-way, and so we'll look at that again and examine it again, bring the engineer in and make sure that we're not going to have any issues as part of those final construction review, if you're acceptable to that.
Okay. Any other questions?
And the, um, triangular, that's a six-inch right now, but you're talking about that's going to be a four-inch.
We're talking about lowering it, bringing your asphalt up, so you would lose those two inches, and then you'd hit your wheel straight up on your slope if you ran over it. It would just allow for an easier transition if the wheel actually hits up on the concrete island. It would still be a raised island, just at four inches instead of six.
That's enough of a deterrent for people.
Yeah, it's definitely a deterrent for an automobile, it's less of a deterrent for a truck, and it, that's what we want. We want it to be able, we want a truck to be able to mount it if necessary to go into the site. So we still, that's kind of why we're looking at that as a suggestion.
And can you tell me, when we were looking up on the screen at the, um, the pictures, and you were talking about the six windows, what sides of the building were we looking at right?
That's the left side of the building. If you're standing on Medical Center Parkway, facing the building, that would be the left side. And if, if, if you look up at the pictures they're showing, I know it's kind of hard, but you have one of these in your pocket, but if you're standing looking, you can see that the entrance feature, the stone entrance feature is not center to the building, it's a little to the right.
That's the part that's drawn, yes.
And so that corner is not correct on the other picture. They showed that to try to show how that stone was going to tie into that roof, but that's one of the things, is that corner is not actually correct. Staff thinks it would be nice to have another row of windows go across there to give it kind of that glass front across the entire, but we wouldn't, we would need to work with the architect on that and see if that could be accomplished. A lot of it has to do with their interior storage and where their freezers are located, and their refrigerators and coolers, and there's so much that goes into the interior layout of these things, so I don't know if that's possible. I haven't discussed it with the architect yet, but, um, that's the only thing at this point that we would look at changing on that part of the building.
Is anybody here representing MapCo tonight?
Yes, sir, there is.
Well.
We've also got an owner and an architect here.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to thank them for working with you, Ms. Logan, on this, because I know we've put some rather stringent conditions on this site, and you've done a good job at modifying what you normally do to meet our demands on this, so I want to thank you so far for working with our staff on that, because I know it took quite a bit of bending on your part to, to do so, so thank you.
Ms. Logan, I, I have a question regarding the glass.
Yes, sir.
What, if I'm, I'm facing, is that to the left, is that going, uh, towards, uh, Chamber of Commerce building?
The glass?
Yes.
That we're talking about?
Yes.
Yes, sir. It would be going, if you're standing at the building, it would be to your left, closest, a side closest to the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, that'd be looking south then?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
We want this to be the nicest-looking map landmark in all of Middle Tennessee.
I was going to ask, is this the most scrutinized convenience store in the history of Murkisboro?
Well, and...
Or close anyway?
It might be. It might be. It's almost convinced me, so here we are.
You're not quite through with them yet, though, are you?
No, sir. Not until you build a permit.
You, you have our sympathies, gentlemen.
No, I think they've worked, they have worked really hard with the staff to try to make a good product. I mean, this is a very sensitive area, it's the first convenience market that will be located in the GDO, and it will set the tone and the precedent for everything to follow it.
And it's, uh, certainly needed in this location, too, I might say.
And it is permitted in this zone district. If I did not say that at the beginning, this is CH property.
Something I'm going to add, just, we were talking about these sort of things, but, um, Mr. Smith, who's the agent involved in this, Mr. Gannon, they made it clear on the very front end that this is going to have to have a look that was, uh, acceptable to the city, and would have to be very compatible with the Chamber of Commerce. That message was sent out, and, uh, it's been reminded several times, and applicants sometimes do that coming in the door. And it, and their spirit has been very, uh, good to work with, we appreciate it.
Yes, they've been very good to work with.
If there's no other, uh, comments or questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second. Motion's made, is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Ms. Logan, we'll move on to Platts and Plans now, and I think you have that with us. We have four items under Platts and Plans, the first of which is Wilkerson Crossroads, Section 1, a preliminary plat for one lot for 1.5 acres, zone commercial fringe, located along Manson Pike, Bobby Francis, and Jeff Gill are the applicants. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir, thank you. And this first item before you tonight is a preliminary plat for one lot on 1.5 acres that is zone commercial fringe located to the southern side of Manson Pike, just east of the intersection of Brinkley Road. And you did consider rezoning for the property at the intersection of Manson Pike and Brinkley Road earlier this evening, and this is, um, just basically across Brinkley Road, that across the street from the Manson Pike Center, which also was up for rezoning earlier tonight. And this one lot, you'll be seeing a site plan on later, and what we have put up at your desk this evening is a master plan that we, um, had asked for as part of the preliminary plat, and so you'll be seeing it. This master plan is not, um, anything that is solid, set in stone, it's just to give us an idea of what their intentions and purposes are. Um, staff would, um, say that we have looked at the master plan that came in, we had a couple of comments on it, um, just in terms of that if they were to construct anything beyond what they are constructing right now, the existing sidewalk and curb and gutter, they would have to pay fee and lieu to the city for that. If they don't, they, then they won't. The City of Murkisboro has, um, on our major thoroughfare plan, intended improvements for Brinkley Road, and we have had the preliminary design for that completed. However, we estimate, according to our city engineer, it's probably at least three to four years out before we actually ever begin constructing anything for, on Brinkley Road. So if they were to do any, you know, any of these lots development on there, where that would be existing, they would have to pay fee and lieu, um, prior to that. Otherwise, um, then it'll just be on the City of Murkisboro when we go to start building that area. And in addition, we would want to make sure that they put a note on their preliminary plat that each lot is going to be handling their own stormwater, because we didn't see that on there, so that's an important thing to us. Um, we would also ask that for the master plan, that we be able to meet with them about future accesses at some point, to coordinate access on Brinkley Road. We've got a lot of lots that are shown through there, and we would want to try to coordinate access and have opportunities for shared access. So we just wanted to kind of get that out there tonight. It's, like I said, it's not, this is not a master plan like a plan development, it's just preliminary and it's conceptual at this point, but we wanted to go ahead and put that into the record. The preliminary plat itself, um, the drainage easements that are private on the Wilkerson, we want the drainage easements that are there to serve the Wilkerson Crossroads subdivision marked as private. We also have a concern about the proposed ten-foot MED easement on the eastern property line. We don't have a concern about having an easement there, we just want to make sure that, that the area they've shown for an easement is adequate in relation to the overhead line, so we just would ask them to double-check that with MED prior to bringing in signatures on the final plat. And then where and how they're going to create all of their water service and utilities has been reviewed, and we seem to be, um, in favor of how they're proposing to do that work at this time. So those are my comments concerning the preliminary plat, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Really, the preliminary plat before you tonight is for the one lot, the master plan is just to kind of give you an idea of the future.
Any questions on the preliminary plat? There are none, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman, I make the motion for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second motion.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item is, once again, Wilkerson Crossroads Subdivision, Section 1, this time, a final plat for one lot on 1.5 acres, zone commercial fringe located along Manson Pike, Bobby Francis, Jeff Gill are the applicants. Ms. Logan?
Yes, sir, thank you. And this final plat is for the one lot that you just considered the preliminary plat for. This plat is in good order, and we do have the same comment about the MED easement, and we would also like to put in the record, there is an area where an overhead electric line is going to be removed, and we would like that completed prior to either building permit or prior to the signing of the final plat, whichever comes first, because this will be an integrated site plan subdivision plat approach under our subdivision regulations, similar to the MapCo that we discussed earlier tonight. When we went through initial design review on that MapCo, you know, we talked about how we're doing that integrated subdivision site plan approach under our new current subdivision regulations, and this is very similar approach. Um, and so we would just ask that that, that line actually be removed, either prior to building permit or prior to final plat signature, whichever comes first. Um, under that, that approach, they can wait till CVO has signed the plat, usually, used to, they would report the final plat first, but they may wait and decide to do it prior to CVO, and we're okay with that.
Okay. Any questions? Ready for a motion?
Chairman, I make motion for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Here, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, motion carries. Dollar General Store Site Plan for 12,900 square feet for 1.5 acres, zone commercial fringe, located along Manson Pike, Turner and Associates Realty Incorporated is the applicant.
Yes, sir, thank you. And this site plan is for a Dollar General located at the, um, along Manson Pike, along the southern side of Manson Pike, just east of Brinkley Road. It is on the one lot that we've just previously considered for preliminary and final plat review, and which you approved, and it will have not only a Dollar General store at about 10,500 square feet, but two, um, additional areas, one small retail shop proposed at 1,200 square feet, and one small restaurant area proposed at 1,200 square feet. And the restaurant area may, may be a retail future, but they've shown it as a restaurant to park it appropriately, so that they have adequate parking on site. So they have provided parking to serve the retail as well as that one restaurant area, so that we don't have a parking issue in the future. And overall, the site plan is in good order, staff has worked with the engineer on that, and we do have a few modifications that we would request. The, um, first is, is that our paved, um, entrance at Manson Pike is a, we need it to be modified slightly to meet our DW, DW4 standard, which is in our subdivision regulations and street specifications, and also to show the proper turnouts with our 25-foot radio on either corner. And also, the area is showing a thirty, the three-lane cross-section, which we requested, um, and we know is something that's important, to make sure we have adequate left and right turn areas, is being shown at three, 33 feet wide, but that must be 33 feet of asphalt, and that the gutters are included in the 33-foot dimension, and so that needs to be widened out to have 33 feet of asphalt, so that we have adequate travel room.
You're talking about the Brinkley Road access?
I'm talking about both the Brinkley and the Manson.
Okay.
In addition, we think the, the engineer has shown a paved entrance on Manson, and we asked for that because of, um, the ability to, because of the speed through there and the ability to maneuver into the site and out of it. We also asked for it on Brinkley. They've shown our standard concrete driveway entrance. We still think a paved entrance is there, although the engineer has expressed there's a little, he has concerns with drainage, making the drainage work. We think we can work with the engineer to accomplish that, but we're, we'll be flexible on it if you're okay with allowing staff to work with the engineer on that prior to permit, um, to try to make sure that, um, that we either do a concrete entrance or a paved entrance. If there's a way we can make the drainage work and do a paved entrance, we would like to, just because of the way that that street's designed, the elevation of the street, the speed of the street, we think it's, it would just make it easier. Concrete will just slow you down, um, and cause a little bit sharper turn into the site, so that's why we're asking for it. Um, otherwise, um, the landscaping plan will have to be a final review by our urban environmentalists. I think they have addressed the majority of our comments, but there is a couple that are missed, a couple trees that are still missing, and that we need to have those, um, added back into the plan as well, but we can work with the, um, with the applicants on that. Um, I wanted to show you the proposed building design. Yes, sir. Um, I, Mr. Aitlott, wanted to make sure that I reminded you that there is a, um, they are showing a, their five-foot planting yard, which was one of staff's comments, that they're only showing it at four feet, they've included their curb, and that's not permitted. So that's going, they're going to have to lose a foot, um, they have adequate area to lose a foot, they're showing a 24-foot drive aisle, they could take that down to a 23-foot drive aisle and gain back their foot, but their landscape yard cannot include their curbing. And when we look at their, when we make their measurements, it appears that it includes their curbing, so we want to make sure we get that in there. And back to their building design, um, the, um, architects on this project, if we could go to the screen, and I know it's a little bit difficult to see, but this is proposed to be an all-brick-and-stone building. It's going to have a defined base, a defined... It's going to have a defined base, a defined middle, and a defined roof line. It will have stone base all the way around, as well as a two-tone bricks, and I'll be working with the architect and the developer of Turner, Mr. Monty Turner, on the actual selections of the colors. They're going to use the proposed bronze storefront, drop canopies, and bronze fuse next fixtures, so it's going to be a nice building. We've worked really hard on it, and they have too. So that's the proposed building design. It's all brick. It's hard to tell on that rendering, but the inset that are the lighter color will be a brown brick, and then the red that will go up, that kind of tries to break up those long walls, is actually a red brick. And there's actually going to be a red brick roloch in between the stone and that brownish-colored brick. It's just kind of hard to see it at that scale on that drawing. Otherwise, I think that I've addressed the majority of the comments, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Hearing no questions come forward, I'll call for a motion.
Move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The final item under Plats and Plans is the Martins Home and Garden Center, site plan for 5,112 square feet on 4.91 acres, zoned commercial highway along Northwest Broad Street. Lester Martin is applicant. Ms. Logan.
Yes, sir, thank you. And if you're familiar with Martins, as on Broad Street, and they would like to propose a greenhouse that's just a little bit over 5,000 square feet, of course, it is over 5,000 square feet, and it's multiple main buildings on one lot of record, which is, requires your review and approval. It's going to be placed on an existing asphalt area that they currently use now for plant storage. The site plan is in fairly good order. They've addressed the majority of staff comments. They've been working with our urban environmental department. They never, somehow or another, I don't really know the history, but in 2007, I believe, they had a, had made some changes, and they did not receive final landscape inspection and approval on that. And I know they're working with Mr. Barbie currently to try to get all of that resolved, to make sure that the landscaping plan that was required and approved by you during their last site plan gets fully implemented. And so that we would just ask that prior to the certificate of occupancy on this building, that that be resolved and that landscaping plan either be installed or bonded, and that it's just resolved and worked out with Mr. Brad Barbie. And we asked for that prior to C of O, because we have to have a permit on this. We don't see any reason to hold, the planning department doesn't see any need to hold the building permit up for that, and the urban environmental department agrees with our stance on that, if you're okay with that. So we ask you to approve it with that condition.
Any questions? Ready for a motion? You're out of motion.
Sorry.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gilli. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Carries. That concludes the Plats and Plans portion of our agenda. Ms. Logan, wonderful job. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll move on to mandatory referrals. We have a mandatory appearance for Mr. Ives, our Assistant City Attorney. This item is pertaining to a right-of-way abandonment request for a portion of Van Cleve Lane at Northwest Broad Street, the City of Murfreesboro applicant. Mr. Ives, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. Always good to be here. We have a somewhat unusual discussion on this tonight, and I regret that I did not see these issues, these two issues, when I was reviewing the agenda materials here a few days ago, but I did not. This shows a City of Murfreesboro applicant, and City of Murfreesboro is bringing this to you, but we're truly not the applicant. The request was made by Eugene Davenport, actually made by, by, now I have a senior moment, but...
Mr. Young has those quite often.
It was made on behalf of Mr. Davenport that we abandoned this half of the right-of-way. Let me back up and give some history. Back in 1994, when the city was doing a major improvement and expansion of Thompson Lane, Van Cleve Lane, Van Cleve was closed to a significant extent. The portion from Manson Pike north to the railroad track, the CSX Railroad, was closed by the county. And ultimately, that was included in property, additional property that was transferred to the battlefield. This section that we're talking about tonight, approximately a block-long section from the CSX railroad tracks to Northwest Broad, was closed by Planning Commission, recommendation of the Planning Commission, approved by City Council, was closed as a public street, but specifically not abandoned. At that time, there was consideration of making a trail crossing at that location, and so this old right-of-way was retained for that purpose. Also, there is a section of Van Cleve on the north side of Northwest Broad that runs up to another portion of the battlefield. That remained open, and that's still open today. The very northernmost portion of that part of Van Cleve was abandoned to the battlefield a year or so ago, and the battlefield will be constructing, National Park Service for the battlefield will be constructing a new entrance into that portion of the battlefield as time and funds permit. So the city closed this section of Van Cleve in 94, did not abandon it. In 1999, the former owner of the property that's to the northwest of this section of Van Cleve, I think that would be, all right. The area that is, okay, the area that is now being requested to be abandoned is shown as blue on the screen. The portion of the right-of-way that's to the northwest of this, or to the left as you look at the screen, was abandoned to the prior owner of that lot. That lot, on the same day that prior owner transferred that lot to the Park Service, and that about three and a half, I believe, acres is now a part of the battlefield. It is fenced with the split rail fence. There are a couple of cannon located on it, and the Park Service, of course, maintains that as part of their park. So at that time, the northwest half of this right-of-way was abandoned to, effectively to the Park Service, because that transaction was in process and at the time of the abandonment. Interestingly, we have not been able to find a record of City Council approval of that abandonment. I have not read the entire thousand or so pages of council minutes. I have looked carefully, however, through the index to the council minutes, and with the help of Ms. Michado, looked for the cross-references where it might have, might be referenced when it's not in place, it should be referenced, and have not been able to find anything. Nonetheless, the deed was signed by the mayor, and that property was conveyed to the Park Service, and the Park Service owns the northwest half of this street.
The, Mr. Ives, if I could interrupt you a second.
Certainly.
The drawing is kind of confusing to me, because it shows the, from Van Cleve, it looks like the, it's indicated the area's the blue strip along there, and it looks like the western portion of the right-of-way. Now, I understand the property lines go to the middle of Van Cleve Lane.
They do. The strip that shows to the immediate right as you're, let me put that back, thank you. The strip that shows to the right is a, an easement for railroad tracks. So the railroad, it's not drawn in, well, it's part of the whole easement. There's a spur line that goes off of, to the north from the main track. In fact, it is still used. There is a crossing there at Broad, and it goes on up into the industrial properties on the north side of Broad. So that's the reason for that wide gap there, that's the railroad right-of-way, railroad easement.
Does the blue area represent the entire right-of-way?
It's probably not the scale, but the blue area really should represent only the part that's in question.
Okay, and that would be then the, basically the eastern portion?
The southeast portion of this right-of-way, or really the eastern portion, that street ran north and south. The, as normal, we corresponded with the department heads as well as with area utilities. If this were to be abandoned, there would be a need to retain, to make sure we retain an easement for AT&amp;T cables, for, the water and sewer department needs at least a 40-foot deep easement for future water and sewer extensions. I believe that's all that we would need to retain. Also, if it were to be abandoned, the standard restriction that the recipient would provide us with a legal description and a replat would also be necessary. The, the letter from Mr. Talbert on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Davenport, was included with your materials. Mr. Johnson, Stuart Johnson, the president of, I'm sorry, the superintendent of Stone River Battlefield, provided an email to staff, and I think it may have been sent directly to you, but a paper copy of that email was also placed on the table tonight, so you've had a chance to look at that. The battlefield does ask that we not release this additional right-of-way to that adjoining property owner. We, as staff has looked at this and discussed this quite a bit over the last couple weeks since this matter first came up, and at this point, we are recommending to Planning Commission that this right-of-way not be abandoned. It appears that it would be of limited value, and by the way, that, wanted to back up to the beginning of the staff comments, the right-of-way is 15 feet wide, but it's not 8,000 feet long. That would be about a mile and a half. This is a long block. It's about 500 feet long for a total square feet of approximately 5,100 square feet. So it's a fairly small piece of property. It is separated from the rest of the property by the CSX tracks, and there's no indication that we have that CSX plans to get rid of that at any time soon. It would have limited value to a recipient, being completely separated that way. It appears to staff that any use that might be made of that, other than perhaps for landscaping, would have a possible detrimental effect to the battlefield. And while we don't always agree with our friends at the battlefield, we have a lot of discussions about uses and activities in the area, for the most part, we do work together, I believe, and it's been my experience since I've been here, that we do work together, and we, as a city, attempt to support that. It is a tremendous attraction for our city, it's a national attraction. We would not want to contribute to a use in this little strip that would somehow be detrimental to the battlefield. The battlefield has long-range plans to remove the surface of, the asphalt surface of Van Cleve Road, and basically, maybe deconstruct rather than reconstruct, but make it look similar to what it was during the Civil War. Probably one of the few streets left in Murfreesboro that actually was in place and was a street during the Civil War and during the Battle of Stones River. If the city retains this, the city would be able to, of course, can't commit, that's obviously way over my authority, but there's at least a possibility that the city would be able to work with the battlefield on a project for this section of Van Cleve, as well as the work the battlefield would do itself down at the lower section. If Planning Commission should elect to abandon this, we would recommend, along with the restrictions that we discussed earlier, the conditions we discussed earlier, we would recommend that the use of this be limited to landscaping, and specifically, and landscaping that be approved, have to be approved by Urban Environmental. Specifically, we would want to restrict it so that there could not possibly be a driveway or any other access onto Northwest Broad, to or from Northwest Broad. If we could have the picture up, please? That is a utility control box belonging to the railroad, appears to be located on the northern half of the right-of-way. None of this asphalt, this is the original asphalt, none of this has been removed by the battlefield. Battlefield has placed their wooden tie fence on it, but that would certainly limit the possible use of this, or the effective use of this, for any kind of driveway, and we would ask that it be, that that be prohibited, that there not be allowed to be any building of any kind on this strip, no parking on this strip, no storage of any materials, supplies or equipment of any kind. And again, as I said, it used to be limited to landscaping. We feel that this is a situation where effectively we're adjoining, we're adjoining a national park, and that the city should retain control of this strip of land, so that we have the ability to cooperate with and make this compatible, make sure that it stays compatible with the Park Service plant. Be happy to ask you any questions.
I'm inclined to agree with you, Mr. Ives. I think because of the sensitive nature of this property and what could happen to it, I'm inclined to think that we need to retain that right-of-way, at least for the time Any other comments? No. I'll let you do that. If there's no other comments, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here on behalf of the property owners and by my present position.
Mr. Talbert, will extend that courtesy to you?
Thank you. I'm sitting right here.
That would not be very, yes. Mr. Gilli would be quite upset with me.
For the record, my name's Larry Talbert, I'm an attorney here in Murfreesboro. I represent Diane and Eugene Davenport, who are here in the audience tonight. They are the owners of this little strip of property, or the adjacent property to this little strip that we're talking about, that has a street address, 2137 2145 Northwest Broad Street, and is what, on the plat, an old plat of the Thomas Henry White Farm subdivision, or Lot 16 and 17. Mr. Ives has done an excellent job with regards to the history of this parcel. Mr. Raymond Garrett, they're seated in front of Mr. and Mrs. Davenport, is a surveyor and has been of inestimable help in assisting me and putting together the history of this property, and has prepared, I don't know if it's in your materials, a plat of survey that he has styled, the Davenport property, that may also, I think I provided that with my letter of December the 2nd, that maybe provides you with a little more detail. And if you don't have it, I'll be happy to hand it up. I have only one copy right now. Okay, it's been, looks like it's been reduced. When we examine the minutes of this commission going back to 1994, as Mr. Ives has stated, this was considered, and it was expressly decided at that time in 1994, that the city would close the Van Cleve Street at the location that we're talking about, but expressly not abandon it, that there was discussion in 1994 about a possible greenway extension there. And then we come about five years later, and the Park Service wants to purchase the adjacent parcel on the western side of Van Cleve Lane. I guess that was McFadden Lane at the time of the War of Northern Aggression. And as part and parcel of the Park Service's acquisition in 1999, they acquired it from an outfit called Unicorn Advertising. an outfit called Unicorn Advertising. Simultaneously, the city quitclaim to Unicorn, and then Unicorn simultaneously sold the entire parcel to the Park Service. The deed that the city prepared, which again should be in your materials, Mr. Reed, Tom Reed on behalf of the city, and of course, the mayor signing it, the legal description that they used talks about the abandoned Van Cleve Lane. It mentions it twice in the legal description. It talks about bound on the north by Northwest Broad Street, on the east by the remainder of the abandoned Van Cleve Lane. And then further down in the description, it also talks about the abandoned Van Cleve Lane.
Who are you quoting there, Mr. Talbert?
Pardon, sir?
Who are you quoting there?
I'm quoting the deed that the city prepared and executed and delivered to Unicorn Advertising, which was part of their deed to the Park Service. And that was prepared and recorded simultaneously. And if you like, let me hand a copy of that deed, together with the recorded simultaneously deed from Unicorn to the Park Service. Mr. Ives has commented, we don't quite understand, the absence of any minutes of this commission or of the council with regards to that 1999 deed, that the city abandoned this and gave a deed to a private individual, but it was obviously part and parcel of a transaction where the Park Service would acquire the parcel that they own today. And if you go back and look, we thought this would be a routine matter, Mr. Garrett and I, when we wrote that letter of December the 2nd to Mr. Ives, because when we, in addition to the deeds, the deed that I've handed up, that Ms. Jones is looking at, we found a plat recorded in 1997, which is the re-subdivision of Lot 13 Wade Industrial Park, which is the parcel that the Park Service owns today. And of course, a plat that was reviewed and approved by the city, that bears the legend, Van Cleve Lane, 30-foot right-of-way, to be abandoned by the city of Murfreesboro, which made, Mr. Garrett and I think, well, we've either missed a deed that is of record in the register's office, which ultimately, we couldn't find, or this has just been a matter of oversight, that somehow our deed to my clients on the other side of Van Cleve Lane never got delivered. And if I might hand this plat up, members of the commission. And then we go a couple of years later, the plat that was recorded simultaneously with the deed to the Park Service, which is called the second re-subdivision of Lot 13 Wade Industrial Park, and again, reviewed and approved by city officials, bears the legend in big capital letters over on the east side of Van Cleve Lane that we're talking about here tonight. It provides abandoned Van Cleve Lane. And if I may hand this up.
Mr. Talbert, you do realize that once you've teamed them up, it's our, for our files, we're going to keep them?
Yes, that's fine. Those are public records. We've just got copies for another 50 cents. I can get all I want. Thank you, Mr. Adalot.
Mr. Talbert, so your argument is that you're saying that you think it's already been abandoned?
Well, from what you would surmise, just looking at the public records that have been of record for 15 years, you would think that. That would have been your impression, that you see all of this language on city documents, that yes, this has been abandoned. That's what it says, and we just need to get the formal documents executed. They've been overlooked, and it needs to be attended to.
Just because Mr. Huddleston put on here to be abandoned does not necessarily mean that it was done though.
I would agree with that. I can't dispute that, but I do find it odd that that legend is on there and on a document that, you know, the city has seen and approved, and the city's own deed talks about being abandoned. I guess the bottom line is that my client just wants to be treated as to his half of this right-of-way the same way the Park Service was. The Park Service got their land, the city gave it to them, essentially to them, without strings or restrictions or reservations of any kind, and that's all they want now.
Okay. Do you know what your client has in plans for this track?
I don't think there are any new changes contemplated, Mr. Chairman. It's been a going business for many years. They are contemplating selling this property as a going business, as a going concern. There are no plans for a change, and we only discovered this issue in doing the survey work for our marketing plan.
Okay. Mr. Ives and Mr. Adalot, would we be in order to defer this for further study from the legal staff of the city to look at this closer?
I will certainly be happy to continue to do that.
He's asking about time limit, and this is, I don't know that we have a time limit for a deferral. I'd like a rezoning. We have so many days unless the applicant is willing to extend the time period. So it could be an opening in the first.
Mr. Young said we've had 15 years since 94, so.
We've got such a favorable real estate market now, Mr. Chairman.
Really?
We don't want to be delayed too long.
Mr. Ives?
I'd be happy to have a deferral and continue to talk with Mr. Talbert, and I have seen the deed. We did not, I did not expect a particular language of the deed that it was going to be an issue in this way. We weren't certainly trying to hide it from anyone. We have the deed, and the deed says what it says. We had not really talked about some of the other plat documents. I had seen Mr. Huddleston, but there's some others, I think, that I hadn't seen, and I'll be happy to continue to consult, to work with him, consult with Mr. Adalot, and see if there, if there's a way that we can be persuaded. I can always be educated.
Well, with the other exhibits entered as evidence here tonight, Counselor Talbert here, maybe a deferral would be in order, so you can look at everything and come back to us at a future time that you deem appropriate, and report to us on any changed facts that you might determine.
Happy to do so. And the essence of my argument is, what's good for the goose should be good for the gav.
We'll try not to make it overly long on a deferral with, probably try to, at least the next February day meeting. We'll keep them for our records, since they turned them in as part of the exhibit they wanted to show us, so that, we will, we try to keep our minutes a little bit more stuffed, or files a little more stuffed.
Mr. Talbert, thank you very much for coming forward. I appreciate it. We're ready for a motion. Make a deferral.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The next item under mandatory referrals, item B, Ms. Eva's going to talk about the right-of-way abandonment request for a portion of Wiles Court at Greenland Drive, Middle Tennessee State University is at. Ms. Eva.
Thank you very much. This is basically a follow-up item to the public hearing that you held under, for E, when you considered closing the right-of-way for Wiles Court. As you know, this is requested by Middle Tennessee State University, and they are requesting to have ownership of this portion of Wiles Court right-of-way, so that they may be responsible for maintaining the section, the street section, and patrolling, and are just basically responsible for the traffic that comes through, that will continue on to the roundabout within the middle of the campus. A mandatory referral from, as I understand it, the purpose of mandatory referral is that the Planning Commission needs to get together, discuss and consider whether the city has any need to keep this property, and you must consider that before any transfer of property rights can be considered, or that they can be transferred over to Middle Tennessee State University. So your discussion should be whether you see that there's a need for the city to maintain this portion of right-of-way. If you see no need for the city to maintain it, and you think it's appropriate to transfer ownership to the MTSU, then you may want to make a motion, saying such. We did make, we did put conditions of approval on closing the right-of-way. I don't know if it's appropriate to just restate those conditions at this time. Probably Mr. Ives knows.
Sure.
As far as, I guess, dotting i's and crossing t's, if you would like to make conditions of the mandatory approval, to be to require the applicant to provide a legal description for the area, a re-subdivision plat, and field locate any utilities, so that easements can be properly located, because there will be easements that will be needed to be retained. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for approval. Subject to all staff comments.
Very weak motion for approval. It's getting late. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Eva. Final item on tonight's business is the staff reports and other business. Mr. Adalot, street naming request for a portion of Wiles Court at Greenland Drive, Murfreesboro Planning Department.
Yes, sir. Early on the agenda, you have conducted a public hearing to consider a closure of a street, and then you have considered a mandatory approval to consider an abandonment of the street, and now we're going to consider a, of what is left, the part that is going to remain as public right-of-way, we're going to consider un-naming that street. And what has happened is that MTSU, of course, is going to be making a street connection into the heart of the campus, and since the time these staff comments were prepared, they've actually come back to us and said they want to name it to Blue Raider Drive, and they're going to make some other name changes internal to the campus. This name is apparently acceptable to emergency communications and to other community agencies. It's not a duplication. If the MTSU does follow through with the other internal changes, seems to be a very appropriate street name for a new entrance into the campus. This renaming would coincide with the reconstruction of the street and the opening of the new street. This will not affect any existing addresses. Nobody has addresses on this property or on this portion of the street, and specifically, this is the part that will remain as public right-of-way, that is shown on the illustration that you received in the materials.
I think you're getting a lot of nods. I don't know if they're nodding off or nodding in agreement, but they're nodding.
I thought they were thoughtful nods, as they, now, this is a thoughtful thing to consider.
If there are no questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Ms. Adalot, do you have anything else?
No, sir. We don't have any other staff reports.
I think we would be remiss not to congratulate Mr. Blomley on his alma mater's recent victory in the national championship game, Mr. Blomley. Congratulations. Nothing, nothing else being said. We stand adjourned.